Welcome to the City Commission meeting. Please turn off all your cell phones during our meeting. And we'll begin with a call to order with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have some proclamations. They are. Yes, they are. Okay. Whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas, this place matters is a national campaign co-sponsored by the Leavenworth Preservation Commission, the Preservation Alliance of Leavenworth, Leavenworth Main Street, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Leavenworth Historic Preservation Month. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I always have. You know me, I like to say a few words. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and rest of the commission for this proclamation. You know, we have a great city in the City of Leavenworth. Of course, our claim to fame is to be the first city of Leavenworth, and with that there's a lot of buildings and built infrastructure that we need to take care of, and that's what our commission does. We try to do our best to make sure that the history of this great city will remain for future generations. So again, thank you very much. Mr. Jackson, would you like to say a few words?
On behalf of the other commissioners that are not present, thank you for the opportunity for us to participate, each and every one of you down the line, and to the current mayor. When you can get hometown folks involved in their hometown, it really establishes why we are the first city in Kansas, and everybody else would kind of want to be it. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to participate in my community.
Thank you, sir. Next item, National Police Week. Whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 60 sworn members of the City of Leavenworth Police Department. And whereas, the Congress of the United States of America has designated the calendar week each year during which May 15th occurs as National Police Week, and May 15th of each year to be Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas, the names of those dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department. And whereas, the members of the City of Leavenworth Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the City of Leavenworth. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 14 through 2017 as National Police Week.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, very briefly, on behalf of the men and women of the Police Department, we sincerely appreciate your gracious support over the years. And a quick reminder, next Wednesday at 5:30 at the Riverfront Community Center, we'll hold our annual law enforcement banquet. You're invited to come out and see some of the extraordinary work of the police officers here in Leavenworth. Thank you again.
Okay, Leavenworth Public Works Week. Mr. McDonald. Whereas, public works services provided in the City of Leavenworth are an integral, integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Leavenworth Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the work they perform. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, do hereby proclaim the week of Mayor, May 21 through 27, 2017, as Leavenworth Public Works Week. Public Works, always there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks again to the citizens and commissioners of the City of Leavenworth for supporting a robust Public Works Department. The hard-working men and women of the department toil every day on sewers, streets, refuse collection, stormwater, maintenance and repair, and vehicle maintenance. Many other people work behind the scenes, working with our records, operating our GIS system, inspecting projects, and performing other project management functions. I can assure you that we strive every day to make our lives better through public works. Thank you.
Do we have a letter? We just have this. And it's... Okay. Only one of the members of the Youth Advisory Commission is here tonight, and we want to recognize, sorry, you want to come on up? This is making.
This is Elizabeth.
Okay. Leavenworth City Commission would like to recognize the appointed members of the Youth Advisory Commission in attendance today. The Youth Advisory Commission is comprised of youth ages 12 to 19 years who serve as a liaison between the City Commission and the youth of the community on issues affecting youth, encouraging positive growth and development of youth, serves as a vehicle to familiarize youth with the city government, assists in minimizing community problems related to youth, gives advice and assistance on matters concerning the needs of youth, and serves as a formal voice of youth on various items concerning youth in the city. Elizabeth, you're graduating, what's your last name, sorry?
Joyce.
Joyce. Elizabeth Joyce, graduating senior this year?
She is actually one of the students who's having to find a new high school next year, so we wish her much luck.
Oh, well, we're going to miss you. We thank you so much for your service to our community, and just a little token of appreciation. Would you like to say anything?
You don't have to.
Okay, just go on. The others had a conflict tonight, but we will... Thank you, Elizabeth. We will recognize them when they come. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, presentation by Colonel Andrew Schaffner, Garrison Commander for Leavenworth.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor, City Commissioners. It's always, I'll just be honest with you, it's kind of intimidating. I know each and every one of you are very good friends of mine, but in this forum and this setting, it's very impressive. And it is indeed a big honor for us to be here tonight. Thank you very much, ma'am, for letting us come here. The whole purpose of my visit tonight is we have some very distinguished citizens of the City of Leavenworth that we've worked very closely with over the last two years. And I just want to take this moment to recognize them. And what we will do in just a few minutes, I'll call up our Public Affairs Officer Jeff Wingo and George Marsec, and they'll help us. And as the individuals come forward, we'll just line up facing you, the honorees, and we'll do that tonight. I'm going to read out the individuals real quick as you come up and stand here, and then I'll ask that Jeff will read out the citation, just read one of these. But the first person tonight will be Paul Kramer, City Manager, and we're very appreciative of that, Paul, for maintaining this strong and cooperative relationship that we've had here with this, between the city and the fort. And I tell you, it's been outstanding. Next, we'd like to bring up Mr. Chuck Magaha, the Director of Leavenworth County Emergency Management. And we really appreciate his efforts as working as a team to safeguard the community. I know this last year, we just did the tornado drill, if you will, for us, but it was post-wide, and we have more involvement this year on post than ever before, and it's because we're working together with our partners both on and off post. Next is Kristi Lee here. There she is. So Kristi Lee, the Manager of Leavenworth Convention and Vigors Bureau, organizing the Vietnam, the Vietnam Traveling Wall, absolutely overwhelming, and several of you were there, I think all of you were there, and I tell you, that resonated better with our community, Kristi, than anything I have seen lately. And that is just fantastic, and I know you did a lot to bring that here, we're very appreciative of that. And the timing was, that was absolutely perfect, because we got a continual bounce with that. Ms. Edna Wagner, if you'd come up, please. Director of the Richard Allen Cultural Center and Museum. She does a lot with tutoring the youth and celebrating the military culture. And I can tell you that we've got a very diverse, diverse culture here, but you know, we don't have any problems here. And even last summer, we had, I think it was 500 people came to celebrate the sesquicentennial of the Buffalo Soldiers, and we had the monument on post, and they started off the Richard Allen Cultural Center, and everything went off out of hitches. And while things may go a little bit uneasy on the east side of Missouri, Kansas City does not have problems, Leavenworth does not have problems. And it's because of great citizens like you, Ms. Edna, that your education, you educate and you inspire others, and we really appreciate that. Melissa Bauer, come on up, please. The Public Information Officer for the City of Leavenworth, working closely with the fort on sensitive issues and publicizing our key events, whether it's a public service or just anything we've got going on. I do not have a problem getting the word out and helping make sure the community stays informed. And I can talk to each and every one of the commissioners, and I have, and we work very closely with our PAO team and with Melissa and the public information that she puts forth. And then Diane Smith, come forward, please. The Leavenworth County Memorial Day and Veterans Day Parade Committees. Fantastic. In fact, I was just bragging about this the other day. Memorial Day, one of the biggest events we have, and it's about six months later, it's the Veterans Day Parade. Absolutely fantastic. She also does planning and organizing for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, as well as Veterans Day and memorial ceremonies. And I can proudly say that I've participated or marched in every event that she put on. And I tell you, it's a, it's a big deal for me to, I've always called this home, you guys know my story, I went to high school here, to march through the streets as a junior OTC cadet is a big deal. And then to come back and march through the streets again as a Garrison Commander, it makes it really special. And this year, even my kids got to join me in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and that was fantastic. And so I really do appreciate that. And if it's not true, just take credit for it. But with that, I'm going to ask Jeff to come up now, and as a token of our appreciation, I have the Commander's Award for Public Service, that we're going to pin on them, and ladies, I'm going to hand, I'm going to put this around in like an Olympic medal. I got in trouble once trying to pin that on a lady or something like that, so we'll do that. And I've also got, a token of our appreciation, it's the Commander's coin, it's got the picture of the fort on the front side, and then on the back, it's got our unit crest with my rank and Sergeant Major rank, and so we'll hand that out to you as well. But if you'll go ahead and read the citations, please.
Okay, sir. "The Department of the Army presents the Commander's Award for Public Service to Paul Kramer, Chuck Magaha, Kristi Lee, Edna Wagner, Melissa Bauer, and Diane Smith for exceptional service to military families, service members, veterans, and civilians for making the Fort Leavenworth community the best hometown of the Army. Their actions bring great credit upon themselves, the Fort Leavenworth community, and the United States Army. Signed, Colonel Thomas A. Schaffner, U.S. Army Garrison, Fort Leavenworth, Commanding."
Thank you. Here you go.
Don't let me hear that Olympic medal.
Hell, yeah. Test out the new ribbon.
Kristi, thanks very much.
Thank you.
I'm handing this to you.
Which one? Sorry.
We're going to change it.
Yeah.
Kristi, I really appreciate that.
All right, I missed it.
Thank you.
I'm going to enjoy it.
You really appreciate the cooperation.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Let's give it a round of...
Woo!
Thank you, sir.
That was really great. Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of the previous meeting minutes. Minutes from April 25, 2017, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, move that we approve the minutes of April 25, 2017, regular meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly. Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, new business, citizen participation. Items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Yes, sir. Mr. Clem, please come to the podium and give your name and address.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank God it's good, well, I couldn't find my way down here. It was a nice meeting to come to. Louis Clem, 1816 Pine Ridge Drive, Leavenworth, Kansas. I always like to say Leavenworth, Kansas. Everybody says, are you in which side of the wall? It's been a joke for years. But I'm sure glad that I was here, because two of the reasons I came down here was to watch Colonel Schaffner, he happened to go to school, my boys were in school, so it's always nice to see a returning, and I hope he retires here, and he's talked about it. I've had him on my trolley several times for celebrations. I thought it was interesting, and I'll quickly get into what I was going to talk about. You know, we get into this historic preservation, and I stopped, wanted to stop down here at Kaplan's. Kaplan's wasn't there anymore, and I went through a whole dissertation of places I wanted to stop down to Leavenworth, but at least I could go in and pray, you know? And of course, so many places, we have churches down there, good, bad, but I was really proud of Pat. I knew the boys, because he taught my son how to be a little boy wrestler. My son was big, he wouldn't, but he taught him how to be a little boy wrestler, and Jeff said he turned out to be one out of 900,000. I didn't think he'd ever be that. So, but, and then you get into the other presentations, I keep wondering when they're going to get stripes on Lawrence Avenue. It's been that way for probably 50, maybe 60 years. Youth Advisory Commission, I really want to hear that lady talk, because I'm starting to see them make more intelligent decisions than some of the adults that I know. And I know everybody wanted to hear that. And I noticed Paul has no gray hair, but if you look at Chuck, and he's gone, I think Chuck's gone, yeah. When I knew him and hired him way back when, he didn't have any gray hair, and I look at him now. So, you know, it's amazing how things change. But my little statement would be on the meters, or the water used. You talked about storm sewer last week, I think it was. And, you know, it's rather interesting, I'll talk about my neighborhood, we use no storm sewers. I did like the water used, that was a good idea. Sorry about your arm, I don't know what it is there.
I'll make it.
But we use no, we're on septic. I like water used. That's a good idea. Meter, eh, maybe that's second choice, but some of the other thoughts that I read in the paper, I don't have much use for, but you'll come up with what you're going to come up for. But as I say, we don't use sewers of any kind. We're on septic. We have five swimming pools up in the neighborhood, and somebody can say, well, they got five swimming pools, I got, let's hit them with something. They got to be hit, you know? You look at the small businesses, and I've talked to several small businesses, and they say, you know, we have one bathroom, and it's never used. They get there, and the employees, they use the bathroom, first of all, and they're out at the Jimmy John's, well, that's a western, it's the portable toilets, and so they never use them, and yet they're, it was looking at hitting them with a big bill, they get the second biggest bill, which includes me, I get the second biggest bill, because I own a small business. And of course, small business pays way more portion of the taxes than anybody else, even big businesses. I hate to say that, because we have so many things that big businesses don't get taxed for. I own a place at 804 Cherokee, and I probably use, it's called the Man Cave, okay? And I probably use 20 gallons of water a month, and that's on a good month. So, you know, I'm looking at water used, eh, I guess, but my swimming pool, you know, I put a lot of water in that, it's on water used. So I really hope you take into consideration, when you're doing it, small business has really been a contributing factor to this community. You look at the Sam Alster, and the Sammy Kaplins, and the Barney Berkowitz, and they're all gone, their businesses are all gone, but we had a plaza, and it's gone now. So, but we did keep Walmart, which is good. Eddie Riley years ago told me, buy Walmart stock, and I said, nah, I don't have Walmart stock. I think we were the seventh or eighth one built, I should have bought Walmart stock, but I didn't. But that's part of life, I've had an enjoyable life. So I really appreciate if you look at it closely, make a good decision, don't go after small business like we do normally. It isn't with intent, I hope, because you have a lot of, I always take the wrong hardware, they have a bathroom in there, and I don't know if anybody uses it. But let's try to take it easy on small business. They're having troubles now as it is, and other than that, I think it was a very good meeting. I always like presentations, especially when people are working hard, and that's a good idea to give presentations, gives them a little reward.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions? Fine, if not...
Well, thank you for bringing that up. This is, was, I know you're referring to our last meeting where we discussed the sewers, and that was brought up to us, those ideas were brought up to us the very first time, and I think there was some comments after that was brought up, that this may be unfair, unfairly, you know? So anyway, we're looking at a lot of different options, and not just that, not just charging $5 a person on their home meter or $20 a business. We aren't, that's just the beginning, we're just not, that probably shouldn't have been brought up last week, but that's either here or there, we want to look at all of the options for trying to get our sewers back in shape, because we really have some crumbling sewers around the city.
Yep.
And so, thank you so much for...
Of course, you get the big money for it.
And it's good to see you again.
Yeah, it's nice to be seen.
Mr. Clem, Pine Ridge doesn't have any storm sewers?
No, we got a creek.
There's no storm sewers up there? They just all flows down the hill?
All flows down to the creek, goes into, hmm, probably Five Mile Creek. Yeah. Well, we tried to get sewer once, even they fought it up on the hill, there's only one guy wanted it, and that was me. But, and the funny thing, on the septic, I protested my taxes, you know? It's amazing, people don't protest. Everybody ought to go in every year and protest. I go in there, and they said, well, you know, they had all this written down, and I said, ooh, what's this? Sewer? And I said, we don't have any sewers. Oh, you don't? What do you have up there? I said, septic. Oh, my gosh, we didn't know that. So here I was pleading for all the rest of them, and they got it all removed, and there's 13 houses up there, and out of the 13 houses, I'm one of them, that came forward and said, thank you, Louis, for giving my taxes lower. There's only one person said, thank you. And that was me that night, laying in bed, I said, thank you, Louis. And I thank the deity for allowing me to have the brain to think of that. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Louis. All right. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Podium, please state your name and your address.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, Rick Hoistler. I am at 416 Pawnee Street, Leavenworth, Kansas, and also 323 Vine Street here in Leavenworth. This is in reference to an open letter that I wrote to each of you last week, Monday or Tuesday last week, and including John from The Times. I have not submitted that yet to any external or national sources, and I would hope that I wouldn't feel that I would want to. But to bring everybody else up to speed, what I've asked the Commissioners and the Mayor is to reconsider Ferguson Hotel Development LLC as the contracted entity which is producing the fourth large hotel in the area. And the reason I ask them to consider that, I understand it may be water under the bridge at this point. I understand this was done, the deal was done years ago. I was part of it in 2015 and 2016. But the reason I wanted to bring it to your attention is because I and my three roommates have personally felt some of the, just the harsh, cruel, and unyielding business tactics that they've used in the past six months against us to evict us. The first contact that was made to us was not a phone call, or an email, or any sort of personable contact, it was an eviction letter from his law firm on November 30th last year. And then, once we responded with, including the lease that I myself, my former spouse, and the agent Mike Riley had signed, his next tactic was to go right to court and to try to give us 30 days for reasons we had violated said lease. So what I'm asking you is to consider how they went about doing this over the last six months. Just last week, the judge ruled indeed to evict us. Why? Because on the one-page lease that was part of our contract, the very first line stated that my former spouse and I, who was no longer married to me when we signed it, by the way, that we would use the home as a single-family dwelling. Single-family dwelling, by our understanding and going to the legal firm who tried our case, was it refers to the walls, the structure, the access to thoroughfare, and the utilities. The judge disagreed, he went to a 1940s, '50s legal dictionary and looked up single-family dwelling referring to a nuclear biologically related family. And so, today, I actually saw it, just about three hours ago, we are now evicted, so there'll be four homeless veterans at some point in the next 48 hours. We'll figure out what to do. I have a travel trailer, we'll go somewhere. I have another house, even though it's in a complete state of renovation, as Carla can attest to you. And so we'll make do, but I would ask you to consider that, one, because of how that LLC acted, is that what we're wanting to sell our city, our citizens, that we espouse? And second, if it's water under the bridge for this deal, please consider that next time Ferguson LLC goes forward with this. Because I'm sure if he did it to me and three other two active-duty majors and one retired officer, I'm sure that he would do it to anybody. With that said, I wanted to thank you all. The four and a half years or so that I've personally been here in Leavenworth has been incredible, from my first few months when I went to Ms. Weekly's antique store and got some gift certificates to give to my then-spouse, to recently, Ms. Williamson here in the city, she's been incredible. Let me sit in the office for hours doing research, looking up 1800s information and documents for the home that I just bought, because I'm a historian, you know, amateur historian. So it's been a wonderful, great experience. The experience with Ferguson LLC is an anomaly. I don't hold this against the city in any way, shape, or form, just that particular entity. So I want to say thank you, and thanks for considering.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right.
Okay. Any other citizens like to speak today? If not, we'll move on. Next item, general items, consider removal of 1261 High Drive from the demolition list.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'll handle this one with an assist from Mr. McDonald if you have any questions about the structure. Julie is out tonight. On October 11th, City Commission adopted a resolution formally beginning the demolition process of a number of structures, including 1261 High Street. At the January 10, 2017 City Commission meeting, voted to give the owner, the new owner of High Street, an extension until May 9th to proceed with the rehabilitation of the structure. Since that time, that owner, Donnie Jackson, who I believe is here, has obtained all the necessary permits for rehabilitating the structure and has proceeded with work. Additionally, Mr. Jackson has paid the previously incurred demolition costs stipulated by the City Commission. At this time, city staff feels no reason to keep this on the demolition list, we would recommend removing it.
Mr. Jackson, would you like to speak, or just...
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Just fine, right here.
Okay. I've been retired for 10 years. I had a blast. I'm gonna do it again, and again, and again. Is there a way that I can get the list of the stuff that's going on the demo, so I don't have to pay for the sewer when I had to go down and hook it up before it goes on demo, and try to buy some of these properties?
When it's on the demo list, we'll have a meeting announcing that it's gonna be on the demo. It's not till approximately the bulldozer's roll that they...
Utilities are discarded.
That they cut the utilities. I mean, you'll have three, four months. 'Cause we put them on, they have like 90 days to respond, and you'll have to contact owners and things like that, and we don't know.
Well, yeah. And banker, 15 phone calls before I even found out who the banker was on that problem.
So, that, you know, it'll, they'll be listed in City Commission meeting notes, notifications, probably the newspaper picks up on a lot of them.
Yeah, Leavenworth Times puts it in, too, in the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed it.
And it's on our website when we have our agenda set up.
Correct.
It's sheet rock now, so all we have left is trim, and cabinets, and flooring.
Get it rented.
No, I'm gonna sell it.
The furniture.
I got a lot of money in this. We stripped it all the way down to studs.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments or questions? If not...
I just wanted to just add my two cents here. I wish they all went like this, you know? That would be so much better for our city.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we remove 1216 High Drive from the demolition list.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, resolutions. Resolution B 2168, authorizing the sale of 2017-B bonds, and A 2017 and B 2017 temporary notes.
Carla?
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the issue before the City Commission is consider resolution relating to the city's general obligation bonds. These are the Series 2017-B, and then temporary notes, we're issuing two different series of temporary notes, A 2017 and B 2017. This will set the date that the bonds will be sold, as Tuesday, June 13th. And the general obligation bonds are gonna be sold in the approximate amount of $1,695,000. And this is for the permanent financing of the general improvement bonds that we, temporary bonds we issued last year for pavement management. The temporary notes, A 2017, are gonna be issued in the approximate amount of $1,370,000. And this is to temporarily finance the city's 2017 general improvements, the pavement management. And the B 2017 temporary notes, for approximately $700,000, is to finance the portion, a portion of the Second Street Bridge over Three Mile Creek. So, if you have any other questions, otherwise, you would need to approve or deny this resolution.
Any other questions, or City Clerk?
No.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution B 2168, authorizing the sale of 2017-B bonds, and A 2017, and B 2017 temporary notes, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item, Resolution B 2169, authorizing the redemption of the city's A 2016 temporary notes.
Okay. And Resolution 2169, again, this is just authorizing, the City Commission giving the authorization for us to call those temporary notes that we'll be issuing as permanent financing. We will give the proper notification to the State of Kansas and the bondholder. If you have any other questions, I can try to answer those for you. Otherwise, approve or deny this resolution.
No. Any other questions?
No.
If not, entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B 2169, authorizing the redemption of the city's A 2016 temporary notes, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider change order number four, Contract 2016-24 with Line Weaver Construction, related to the 2015 sanitary sewer rehabilitation and replacement project.
McDonald, Public Works Director?
Yes, sir. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is wrapping up the large sanitary sewer repair rehabilitation project that the city embarked on after award of the contract in March of 2016. Line Weaver Construction worked on it throughout 2016, and finished up the work earlier this year. There were a series of change orders during the course of the project that are outlined in the policy report previously approved by the City Commission. The change order number four this evening is related to adjustments for additional work at unit prices, some are over, and some are under, as well as a repair, a point repair to the sewer that needed to be completed in order to complete the lining process. This will close the project out, and the project, the project total will be, what was the minimum, $684,000, $684,295. We are preparing to advertise for the next project of approximately the same size here in the next few weeks.
Okay. And we're still within budget on this one?
There's funds available in the sanitary sewer capital funds to pay for this work. It's the same general group of funds that will also be involved in the next project, so it's, it's not in two places.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. McDonald?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept change order number four, Contract 2016-24 with Line Weaver Construction, related 2015 sanitary sewer rehabilitation and replacement project in the amount of $10,472.50.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Please begin voting, Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda, please.
I'd like to move for your approval claims for April 22nd, 2017, through May 5th, 2017, in the amount of $634,211.60. The net amount for pay number nine, effective April 28th, 2017, in the amount of $306,335.81. The fire and police pension is $11,401.34.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Last item on the agenda is select dates for the City Commission budget work session.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the City Commission meets annually over two or three days to review, modify, and provide staff with direction on the final draft of the City's Commission's annual operating budget. Based on our previous history with the budget schedule, it was recommended that the City Commission selected time during the week of July 10th through 14th to convene budget work sessions. Going on what we've done last year, would be advised that maybe the afternoon of Wednesday,